Good evening. Want to welcome you all here tonight, and I will call to order the York County Council meeting for August 19th, 2024. Again, we welcome everyone. It's always nice to see such a good group of folks coming out to the county building to help look at what's going on on county agendas. At this time, we typically have the invocation and pledge of allegiance from, we would have it from Tom Aldette. He did want to make sure, and I cleared this HIPAA, this is not a HIPAA violation, he very much said I was okay to say this. He would love to be here, and he's not being a slacker. He tested positive for COVID, and he wanted to make sure he didn't spread that around with the rest of us, so he can't be here tonight. But our representative, Tommy Atkins, has agreed to lead us in invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for letting us be here tonight. Give us wisdom and knowledge as we go about your business. Dear Lord, I grant that you welcome everybody and have safe passage home, and forgive us for all our sins and our wrongdoing. Ask it all in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda is oath of office for folks who have been appointed to board and commissions. If I call your name, if you'll please come forward and stand in front of the podium, and our county attorney will meet you at the podium in order to be sworn into office. We have Karen McBane, Keep York County Beautiful, District 6; Charles Robinson, York County Library Board, District 4; Carol Herring, York County Library Board, District 6; Patty Myers, Board of Disabilities and Special Needs at Large; Jeffrey Ellison, Catawba Mental Health Board. And as you make your way forward, I do want to say on behalf of council, thank you very much for your willingness to serve. You are going to serve without pay, I'm sure you already know that. And you very rarely get thanked, because it's one of those jobs that has to be done, and sometimes folks agree and sometimes they don't, but we simply cannot do the business of the people without having committed individuals who are willing to serve on these volunteer boards and commissions. So on behalf of the council, we do want to say thank you very much for your willingness to serve, and we appreciate you being here tonight.
Good evening. Thank you. Thank you very much. Raise your right hand, repeat after me. That you solemnly swear that you newly qualified according to the Constitution of this state exercising duties of the office, which I do appoint, that I will to the best of my ability charge the duties thereof, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of this state. Thank you.
Thank you again for your service. Now that we move into the appearances section of our agenda, we have several folks who are appearing before council tonight, first of which is Kristen Cooney with York County 4-H Program to recognize Lilly Moss and Evie Martel on their accomplishments.
Good evening, members of the York County Council. My name is A.J. Dover, and I am delighted to be here as the incoming president for the 2024-2025 York County 4-H Team Council. I'm excited to share some wonderful news about our thriving 4-H program here in York County, which is now boasting over 500 registered members. First, I'd like to recognize one of our most outstanding members, Lilly Moss, who has been elected as the 2024-2025 State 4-H Team Council Secretary. Lilly is the outgoing vice president of our York County 4-H Team Council and is deeply involved in agriculture, mainly showing meat goats and riding horses. She also served as a summer intern for York County 4-H, where she made significant contributions to our programs and represented us at the South Carolina 4-H State Congress. Additionally, Lilly is also an active member of the York High School FFA and will be serving as treasurer of their local chapter this year. We are incredibly proud of her accomplishments and her dedication to 4-H and agriculture. Next, I'm thrilled to share the achievements of Evie Martel. Evie is an active member of our York County 4-H Team Council and currently serves as the scribe for the club. This past year, she led a 4-H homeschool science club engaging youth around the ages of nine to 13 in hands-on science activities. Evie also participated in the South Carolina 4-H Engineering Challenge this year, where she won multiple awards. She also represented York County as 4-H, or sorry, she also represented York County at 4-H State Congress in Clemson this summer. Her 4-H portfolio, which is a record of her leadership, community service, and project opportunities, was judged amongst 4-Hers and from all over the state of South Carolina. And I'm proud to share that her hard work earned her a trip to National 4-H Congress in Atlanta, Georgia, along with an educational scholarship. Furthermore, Evie interviewed for and won a trip to the National 4-H Conference in Washington, D.C., which comes with an additional scholarship. This upcoming 4-H year, Evie will be working towards earning the highest honor in South Carolina 4-H, which is the Presidential Tray. Before I conclude, I would like to extend a special thank you to Councilman Tommy Atkins for his continued support of our Fall Livestock Show and to Councilwoman Kristy Cox for her support of our dairy goat project this year. Your backing has been instrumental in the success of these programs, and we deeply appreciate it. I would also like to extend an invitation to all council members to attend our York County Fall Livestock Show on September 6th and 7th in Rock Hill, South Carolina. Your presence would mean a great deal to our youth and to our community. Please join me in congratulating both Lilly Moss and Evie Martel on their extraordinary achievements. Their hard work, dedication, and leadership are shining examples of the impact 4-H has on our youth and our community. We look forward to seeing what they do next.
Before you sit down, before you sit down, I do want to say on behalf of council, it's always exciting. It's one of the initiatives that our council has been very much behind, is preserving and protecting our agriculture, and how do we find ways to do that? And we're continuing to do that. Sometimes we don't get to hear the cool stories about how folks are representing our county throughout the state, so congratulations to you again, ladies, for the work that you have done. We appreciate you coming here tonight to share that information with us. We would like to go ahead and get a picture of, if y'all don't mind, unless any other council member wants to speak. We'd love to get a picture of you if you come in front, stand in front of the council. I like the green, looks good. We have an exciting night tonight with lots of different special visitors. So, one of the things that we certainly all can agree on in York County is that we have the best schools in the state. We have so many talented students and athletes in a variety of different areas, and we have some special members that are here with us tonight so that we can celebrate another exciting thing that's happened in York County. Do want to recognize Coach Kelsey Black, who is the head coach of the Clover High School Girls Soccer Team. Could she please come forward? Coach Black and her team cleared two of the program's biggest hurdles over the last six years. Apparently, that's defeating J.O. Mann and Malden in the buildup to defeating Chapin 2 to 1 to earn the very first championship, state championship, in the program's history. The Blue Eagles took an early lead through Marilia Nieves' goal from the penalty spot before doubling its lead, following a goal from Olivia Marr, and then the entire team defended those goals with tenaciousness in order to close the game out in a 2 to 1 victory. The Blue Eagles finished their season with an overall record of 20 and 4. We are very proud to say congratulations to the state champs, and we are certainly proud of you. And I see you guys have already assumed the position. You already know what to do. Get a picture. If you want to go to the podium, that way you can be heard.
I just want to say on behalf of Clover Women's Soccer and the coaching staff and admin and the Clover community and Lake Wiley community, we're really grateful for the support we have this season, and thank you guys so much for recognizing us. We greatly appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I understand there's a lot of people at practice doing some other things, so keep going. We appreciate it. Next, we have Keep York County Beautiful representative to provide us with our annual report.
Good evening, how are you all doing? I will just, I got a clicker person, and this is kind of scary, but we've got some great stuff to tell y'all about. So, on behalf of Keep York County Beautiful, we'd like to extend our thanks to you county council, to the county management, public works, Eric Rickett, Director, Ryan Blanc, Assistant Director, York County's Solid Waste Collection, Recycle, and Admin Staff. And currently, we have 12 of 14 seats strong. Keep York County Beautiful is not funded through a county budget. Y'all know how we're funded? This will be interactive. It is through grants. We had $10,000, we secured $10,000, and we've earned more than $200,000 plus litter cleanup supplies here to date. In addition, the board volunteers, we are a planning and hands-on working board. We worked 475 hours valued at $15,000. We've received the Keep America Beautiful President Circle Recognition Award and the Keep South Carolina Beautiful Affiliate Recognition Award. We do an annual litter index, which means we pile in cars and drive around all these roads in York County to say, is it littered? One means, oh my goodness, it looks pretty good, and five means, oh my gosh, that's the worst I've ever seen it. And we go round and round, and every five years, it's a new set of roads. We're pleased to say this year, York County roads scored a 1.34, which is pretty close to looking pretty good. So we need to thank everyone for all the work that they do for that. We have different focus areas. One is waste reduction and recycling. This committee is all about telling people how to reduce waste and what does recycle? Like, do yogurt tubs recycle? No, they don't. It needs to have a neck, and that will recycle. So if you don't have the York County Recycle Right York County app, you can get that, and you can ask it. Can I recycle my Christmas lights? Can I recycle yogurt tubs? Can I recycle pudding containers? Can I recycle milk cartons? So you can get all your answers there. But I want to highlight some of the stuff that we did. So, how many of you have ever been to Earth Day Birthday? Y'all, did you have a good time? This year, Earth Day Birthday, we had over 1,000 people came through. Things like master gardeners, we had groups making tie-dye shirts, we had so many kids that came, and they learned about recycling and taking care of the earth. We also do litter pickups. There's one that's called the Polar Bear Pickup for a reason, because it is cold when we do this one. We had three tons. There were 53 pickups, 241 people, and three tons. Imagine three tons of litter is no longer on the roads. That's probably what contributed to that 1.34 we scored. Also, we have one in a spring. I like this one, not too hot, not too cold. And in this one, we had 1,945 bags coming up to 46 tons. And it's hard to believe there's that much litter, but we're talking about stuff like car tires. There's all kinds of things out there. So 46 tons of litter is no longer on our roads. Other thing I want to tell you about is Adopt a County Road. Have any of you adopted a county road yet? How many of y'all want to? This should be everybody's hand up here now. If you go by rainbow circle, that York County Road is adopted by Dog Mom. Do y'all know who that is? It's me. I said, can I put Dog Mom on there? Allison said yes, and I said, okay, I'll commit to clean it up four times a year. So Adopt a County Road, there are litter challenges all during. If you keep up with our social media, you'll see all the challenges that come out there. We give them t-shirts, we give them grabbers, we keep them safe. And then there is an Adopt Your Spot. Those of you who have businesses, if you haven't adopted your spot, I know y'all want to, so let me know, and I will give you the hookup on that. We give you free supplies to do what you're already doing, which is keeping the area around your business clean. What else do we do? We had four $500 scholarships, 13 mini grants in different spots around the county, but we also had four $500 scholarships, and we have a waste-free costume swap coming up. And what that is, is people that don't have costumes can come and get a costume, people that have costumes that don't want to use it, they can drop it off. This year, on October 11th, we're going to be in New Center Park at 5:00. We'll have a make and take for the kids to do to learn more about what we do, but we're going to save all of that from going in the landfill, which is a part of our continuing education there. We have classroom anti-litter pledge forms, very, very active in the schools with the liaisons, and we do have social media. So, how many of you have the app installed? Recycle Right York County. I'm looking at y'all. Nobody has this app installed? All right, question again, how many of y'all want to? Yeah, all right. We are that cool. We have an app, y'all. And if you want to know about when you can recycle hazardous materials, if you want to know when the Earth Day Birthday is, install the app, and then you'll know that you can't recycle yogurt tubs. But we're excited. We do a lot without funding. We do a lot for the community, and as you mentioned, we don't get paid, but it's okay because Leslie makes a mean pound cake, and she shares. And our biggest model we have is we have pledges from children. We're reaching out all across the community to try to make this a better place for all of us and for those of us who come after us. So please find out more, download the app, you'll find it in your local app store, and love where you live. Thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you, ma'am. We do want to say thank you to Keep York County Beautiful. It's one of those things that we get a bunch of calls about from council, and it takes a village, it takes our entire community working on that to keep our community clear and clean and safe. Thank you for coming. We move now to our public forum session of the agenda. This is an opportunity for folks who signed up to speak for two minutes before council, because we have a whole agenda that we need to carry through. This is not an interactive process, it's simply an opportunity for the council to hear from individuals who come and sign up. We do ask that you keep your comments specifically restricted to matters that are within council jurisdiction, and if you would keep your comments to where they are not personal or attacking in nature, we also appreciate that, too. When I call your name, if you'll come forward and just restate your name and give your address before you start speaking. If you'll also pay attention to the screen, the screen will let you know when your time is getting closer, and then it will go to a flashing red light. And we would ask that you cut off your comments before I have to. That way, I don't have to be the meanie in the room. I will say this, it looks like most folks are here for similar issues, but there are a couple that may be related to rezoning. If this is something that is a public hearing item, meaning if it was something that was published as a public hearing item, you're certainly welcome to speak for the two minutes, or you can wait and wait for the public hearing. At the public hearing, we won't have to limit your time. So we will go ahead and start. Joanna Boyd?
Hi, good evening. I'm Joanna Boyd. I live at 1539 Mission Road in York. I'm a school psychologist for the York School District and a lifelong resident of York County. I'm also a volunteer for numerous rescues in our area. So weekly, I am inundated with requests from my colleagues and friends to help them with cats and dogs that they have found as stray or that I dare say were dumped on their property. Living in a rural area, I too find that cats and dogs suddenly appear on my land. My husband is a hunter, and he and I have talked often about how the overpopulation of cats and dogs is similar to when a population of species exceeds the carrying capacity of its environment. In these cases, wildlife management allows for regulated hunting, or even in some areas, spaying and neutering of deer to reduce the population. I am by no means suggesting that we hunt cats and dogs, but I am asking you to consider a humane way of thinning the overpopulation through a spay and neuter ordinance. Whether you're an animal lover like myself, you tolerate animals like my neighbor, or you despise animals like Cruella de Vil, the overpopulation of dogs and cats has collectively become a community crisis, and it's the responsible residents of York County that are becoming burdened daily by animals being dumped. This is not the problem of our underfunded and limited-capacity animal shelter, where unfortunately, animals are being euthanized due to lack of space. This is a community crisis that only you can control. Please effect change in our community by holding animal owners responsible and enact a spay and neuter resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Stephanie Brown?
Hi there, my name is Stephanie Brown. I live at 715 Sandside Drive in York. I hope to convey the urgency in which we need your ongoing help to prioritize the animal overpopulation crisis in our community with spay-neuter resources and regulation. The number of people dumping pets and finding stray and neglected animals in our community is overwhelming. The majority of these animals are not fixed, causing litter after litter. These animals then become the responsibility and burden of the county and local rescues instead of the responsibility of their owners. There's also an abundance of local backyard breeders with puppies for sale. We have healthy, adoptable dogs being killed with regularity right now, robbing them of their life and causing a huge toll on our amazing shelter workers. All the while, anyone can bring more dogs into the world just to make a buck. We currently have far more regulations in place surrounding the sale of goods and services than we do selling a living creature. For me, as a shelter volunteer, to interact with these dogs one day and then be dead the next for no reason other than overcrowding is crushing. Y'all have the power to make a difference. We need regulation and resources in place surrounding spay-neuter. Please also consider a permanent TNR program for community cat services. I've trapped 42 cats this year. Without TNR, those 42 cats over five years would have turned into over 400,000 cats in our community. So many rescues and community members like myself are committed in our efforts, but that can only go so far. We need the commitment from council to help further these efforts. I would strongly urge you to spend a few hours at the shelter and go out in the community with a rescue to see for yourself the crisis we're facing. I'll end with this quote, "Each one of us can make a difference. Together, we can make change." Barbara McCulkey. Thank you for your time and service.
Thank you, ma'am. Rose Schimmeluski?
Hi, my name is Rose Schimmeluski, and I'm at 413 Canoe Court. I've been in rescue for over 10 years, and this is the worst I've seen things. We are asking for a spay-neuter resolution, whether that be for all animals or just for outside animals. We also need better laws for breeders. I can give you two examples that I have witnessed within the last four weeks. I have an acquaintance who breeds their German Shepherd, who just had yet another litter. They have been unable to sell four puppies, and now they have become so grown, they are now being given away for free. This goes to show you, there are no homes available for purebreds or mixed breeds. I have also been contacted by Good Samaritan regarding a property housing 16 animals. Some of the animals are spayed and neutered, but most are not. The mama dog in a year and a half has now had two litters of puppies. The first litter was nine puppies, five of which were able to find homes, and it turns out those were females. The four males are now eight months old and never found homes. They currently reside in a kennel in the backyard. The mama dog's second litter is four weeks old. So to summarize, one dog at 18 months old has birthed 18 puppies. Of those 18, only five have found homes. We are working on spaying and neutering all dogs on the property. However, we are unable to find a rescue for any of the dogs, even the four-week-old puppies. We were hopeful to even split the new litter between different rescues, but no rescue even has room to take a few. York County Animal Services, volunteers, rescues, and Good Samaritans are overwhelmed and exhausted. 87% of dogs and 88% of cats entering York County Animal Services, which is our shelter, are not fixed. Although local rescues offer free spay and neuter services, most pet owners in our county are not willing to fix their pets. As rescue, we have done what we can to minimize the overpopulation crisis, but your support is essential in developing a spay-neuter resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Barb Katzenberger?
Hi, Barb Katzenberger. I live at 106 Hallmark Crossing. I've been in rescue for about 40 years, and again, like many of us have said, this is the worst I've ever seen it, ever, even during COVID when some of the clinics were closed. I'll read you what I have here. Mandatory spay and neuter for all dogs and cats in York County is absolutely necessary. We rescuers that run, whether it's a 501(c)(3) or me and my sister and a few friends that just do it on our own, cannot continue the pace we have been dealing with for the last several years. I have not had a vacation, a day off, I have a full-time job, a family, and every morning that I am off, I'm getting up at 6:00 a.m. to drive other people's animals that have been dumped to clinics that are either free, which York County has on Mondays and Tuesdays, and it's a wonderful facility, but there is only one veterinarian there, and she is currently out on maternity leave. Animal control definitely needs more funding. We are literally the ones out in actual trenches, ditches, woods. I'm completely covered in bug bites, and I know every single one of these rescuers is the same. We're doing the trapping, the vetting with our own funds, fostering for months on end, feeding, caring for, and desperately seeking placement in homes for these animals when there's no alternatives. This cannot continue. Again, York County is fortunate to have an animal control with a wonderful veterinarian. Animal control needs more funding, and mandatory spay-neuter would help alleviate many of these many litters that are born with no, you know, I just, I can't even, it's a life of suffering for the volunteers that work there, for the animals, for everyone. Enough is enough in this day and age where rabies is required, that those breeders and pet owners can't get their cats and dogs spayed and neutered at the same time, and it should be long. It will help.
Thank you, ma'am. Mary Ann Lundine?
Hi, my name is Mary Ann Lundino. I live at 106 Hallmark Crossing. I am going to speak to, although I agree with everybody's statement so far with the overpopulation and how hard we are all working to help as many cats and dogs as we can, I'm going to speak to the lack of control that our animal control officers have. And I will just give you one incident. We were able to remove a pregnant cat from a home here in York County that had been starved. She was only eight months old on her second litter of kittens. Her first litter of kittens died from malnutrition. She was digging in the garbage, and the only way we found out about it was because somebody who lived there alerted a rescue, and that's how it all started. She was given permission to take this pregnant kitty out, and we put her in foster, and she safely had her kittens, but there was still one kitten remaining in the house that they had thrown up against the wall, broke its tail. There's a dog living in a bathroom covered with feces. An officer was sent there, and he claimed, we had photos of all the trash and everything, and he claimed that there was nothing out of the ordinary there. and he claimed that there was nothing out of the ordinary there. So, it's impossible. I still have the photos. I know what happened. So, that is something that I feel is very important. Our animal control officers have to have the authority to make things happen when things are reported. And the other thing I would like to talk about is the South Carolina Code, 47-1-70. A person may not abandon an animal. As used in this section, abandonment is defined as deserting, forsaking, or intending to give up absolutely an animal without securing another owner or without providing the necessities of life. Necessities of life includes adequate water, which means a constant access to a supply of clean, fresh, potable water, provided in a suitable manner; adequate food, which means provision at suitable intervals of quantities of wholesome foodstuffs; adequate shelter, which means shelter that reasonably may be expected to protect the animal from physical suffering or impairment of health due to exposure.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. I did write down the statute. Michael Copeland.
I'll wait for the question.
Okay. Adam, speak. All right. Well, that concludes our public forum session. We do appreciate folks coming out and sharing the information with council. Our next item on the agenda is consent agenda. I understand there are...
Item number 16.
So, item number 16, item number three.
Item number five, please.
Item number five. So, under, it looks like item number three and item number five will go to old business, and item 16 will be in new business matter. We will move those to the other. If you want to hand it, that's fine. If you want to hand it to the clerk, she'll make sure to pass anything out that you want.
It's just a copy of that code.
Sure.
It is possible by jail and fines, and nobody's enforcing it.
So, we have removed those items from the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve consent with those removed?
We have to approve the removals.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. And what clerk's asked for, it was a unanimous vote to approve consent with items number three, five, and 16 being removed.
Allison.
All right. We move now to our first public hearing. Item, item number one, rezoning action. Hold a public hearing and consider first reading case number 24-30, tax map number 588-0106014 and 015, to rezone from RFF40 to RMX10, two parcels that total .4 acres in District 6. Mr. Blono.
Yes, so this is two pieces of property. They're on West Lakewood Drive in an older subdivision, well, the Lakewood subdivision, it is less than half an acre between the two parcels total. So, this is a plat of that older subdivision. It's from the mid-'50s, so it predates zoning by a good 30 years. So, the lots that are planted in here, they are non-conforming in size for their current RSF40 zoning district. A lot of the properties in here since the '50s have been combined. Some property owners owned multiple lots in a row and built buildings across property lines. You can no longer do that either. So, this request is to rezone to RMX10 to allow the applicant to combine these two lots so that they can build one new home. So, those two lots are outlined in red there. Staff recommends approval. It's consistent with the comp plan and the future land use map. The future land use map is looking for neighborhood residential here, and that matches the RMX10 district. The proposed residential use is also consistent with the existing neighborhood, and it also eliminates the lot size nonconformity for these two lots. By a 5-0 vote, planning commission also recommends approval.
Any questions for staff before we open the public hearing? Hearing none. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this request? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor?
Move close.
Second.
Motion and a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries unanimously. We move now to second public hearing, rezoning action. Hold a public hearing and consider first reading case number 24-31, tax map number 586-0107002, to rezone from RSF40 to RMX10, .602-acre parcel in District 6. Mr. Blono.
Yes, this request is in the same neighborhood as the previous case. It's on Palmetto Drive. It is a single parcel. So, here's another section of that Lakewood subdivision from the '50s again. So, the area in green is what the single parcel is today. It was previously three lots. Those were recombined into a single lot in 1985. What the applicant is proposing to do is to now subdivide that single lot into two to build two new homes. So, rezoning to RMX10 would allow them to pursue that. Staff recommends approval. It's consistent with the comp plan and the future land use map designation of neighborhood residential. The proposed residential use is consistent with the neighborhood, and it also eliminates that same lot size nonconformity as the previous case. By a 4-0 vote, planning commission also recommends approval.
Any questions for staff before we open public hearing? Hearing none. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this request? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor? Nobody wants to speak? I saw a hand go up. If you want to speak, you need to come forward and speak.
My name is Jennifer Stoller. I actually live across the street on 3900.
If you'll just give your name and your address right quick.
Mm-hmm. My name is Jennifer Stoller, and I live across the street on Palmetto Drive on 3900. So, I'm not familiar with the RMX10, and my question was regarding if that is the same allocation that down the road on Palmetto Drive, there was a previous lot about six months ago that was rezoned? If that is the same type of building that's going to happen?
Jonathan, can you answer that question?
Yeah, so it's the same district. So, if you look at the map, you see the yellow. I believe the previous zoning case you're referring to is the two parcels that have the brownish color in that sea of yellow there. So, it's the same zoning district, but the type of building and the type of construction is entirely up to the property owners.
Okay. And what could that allocate for?
Any type of single-family home that meets the setbacks on a 10,000-square-foot lot.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you. I just wanted to understand what that exactly meant.
Okay.
Description for it.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on the matter before we close the public hearing?
Move close.
Second.
Motion and a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries unanimously. We move now to item number three, public hearing, rezoning action. Hold a public hearing and consider first reading case number 24-32, tax map number 581-0000054 through 62, 64, 65, 70, 71, 583, 0000, 71, and 72, to rezone from RMX10 to RUD, 15 parcels totaling 215.29 acres in District 2. Mr. Blono.
Yes, so this application does include those 215-plus acres across 15 parcels depicted in the red outlines and the aerial imagery here. This is on the Concord Road Peninsula on Lake Wiley. It's just east of the nuclear power station. So, the applicants here propose to subdivide those 15 lots into 38 total lots, all are at least five acres. The applicant does not intend to provide open space, which is required in the current RMX10 district, but not in the RUD district, which is the request. Staff recommends approval of the request. It is consistent with the comp plan and the future land use map. The designation for this peninsula is rural residential. You can see that in the minty-green color on the right. RUD is a more consistent district with the existing residential uses and lot sizes on the peninsula currently than the RMX10 district is, and by a 3-1 vote, planning commission also recommends approval.
Any questions for staff?
Yes, you referenced 38, but it's 34 in our packet. Is it 34 or 38? 15 parcels turned into 34 or 38?
I based this slide off of the numbered lots, and it numbers up to 38. So, if the actual count is 34...
Up to 38. Okay. Yeah. It's actually 34.
Yeah, the important stat line is there because the rezoning doesn't lock them into the configuration of the lots, just...
Gotcha.
They are proposing at this time to have all of the lots be at least five acres.
So, we probably should amend that to say up to 38 instead of in to 38.
Yeah.
Suggestion.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. Does the parcel owner, parcel owner is aware and receptive to deed restrictions on this parcel? Have they been made aware?
I've not seen deed restrictions to date.
Have they, do you know if that's been suggested to them as part of this rezoning?
I believe they've contemplated that, but I've not seen any.
Okay.
I should have asked this question. I apologize. But there was, there was one no vote on planning commission. Do you remember why they voted against it?
No, I do not know why the one commissioner voted against it.
Okay. Does anybody on council know why the one person voted against it, a chance?
I think we can, this is the first of three readings. Probably get that information later. Any other questions specifically for staff before we open the public hearing? All right. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this rezoning request? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor? If you'll come forward and give your name and address.
I'm Mark Sleeper, 3872 Concord Road. I live at the very end of the development, off of Concord Road. Myself and local neighbors have been very closely involved with the sale of this property. Originally, it was 573 acres, I believe, with Duke. They ended up selling about 300 and some to Titan a couple of years ago, and there's been many proposals on how to subdivide this over the years. It pains me to be here now to say that I'm actually not opposing something that they are proposing. I'm not going to say at this point that I would support it, but I'm not opposing it, and the reason is what you just asked. One more short little bit about some history on that. If you look at the map, that entire peninsula has one egress, and it's a two-lane bridge that goes directly past the nuclear plant, which is just out of sight on the top of that. So, if there's an emergency at the nuclear plant, we've got a real problem getting out of there, especially if emergency vehicles are coming in at the same time. We have one road in, one road out. So, myself and our neighbors have, from day one, 19 years ago, tried to influence the sale of this property. We know it's not ours. If we could have bought it, we would have. But the whole goal has always been to limit density, and that's for safety reasons. But now that Titan bought it, they had it into, I forget, 27 lots. They were large lots. We were still very concerned that somebody would buy a 27-acre lot and then try to come before you again and try to subdivide it further and further and further and finally get it down to high density again and multifamily. That's not what they're proposing here now. They say five-acre minimum. To us, that's a win. Again, it pains me to say that, but if, but more importantly, if they sell it to someone, I know that the process is they could come back before the planning commission, and that person can now subdivide it further. And I know there's restrictions. If they go below five acres, they have to redo the roads and spend millions of dollars, which is, I'm sure, why they are stopping at five acres now, not to be good stewards for us. But if that's what slows things down, then that's fine. If it gets below an acre, I believe, or maybe it's two acres. If it gets below two acres, then they've got to have water and sewer trying to get across that bridge or millions of dollars, I'm told. So, that hopefully won't happen. However, without deed restrictions, to me, we're in the same spot we're going to be as soon as they sell a lot, then we're going to have to be coming up before you and trying to talk to the new owners and say, hey, we need to limit density for all the reasons we talked about. So, I am not against this, but I'm not supporting it. I would definitely support it, and I think my neighbors would too if they put a deed restriction on it. Also, the other thing I want to point out to you is in the packet, the application package that they sent you, I believe you said they're not held to this exhibit F. Is that correct? Because right now, you talked about 38 lots, I believe, Mr. Huckabee. Right now, we have, they have resigned all the lots out there, signage. The lot across from me was Lot 13. I understand they had to re-signage them because they've got more lots now, but now it's Lot 30 on here, but the actual sign says 39. There's another lot that has a sign that says 40. So, if you're, you're going to say we're going to restrict it to 38, they already got signs out there that say they identify a Lot 40, and that particular Lot 40 is not even on the map to be rezoned. Maybe that doesn't need to be rezoned because it's definitely less than five acres already. So, that gives me concern that the numbers don't match. I know I could put a number and a sign on my lot today, and it could be 238. That's my privilege, and that's their right to have whatever signs they want. However, if you're asking us to come before you on a public hearing and comment on it, and the signage doesn't match the application, that gives me cause for concern. So, I hope that will be straightened out somehow. The other thing I want to point out is, on your exhibit F, I hope you guys get a bigger copy than we got, because I literally had to use a magnifying glass. One of my friends blew it up for me, but just so you know what the fine print says, the proposed land, one of them, number nine, says the proposed land use is single-family residence. That's good. So, that takes care of multifamily. Number 11 says all lots shown herein must maintain a minimum of 20% of the lot area as green space. I thought I just heard someone say that they are not being required to have green space. Is that correct? It says it in writing right here on your exhibit F.
It's just an exhibit. So, at the stage that we're at, at a rezoning, they're not submitting a plat to be stamped. So, once this, if the property does get rezoned and they do submit, that note would have to be edited.
Okay. Well, then I request that you guys require green space. It's everywhere else. It should be here. This is a rural area, and there's no houses in there right now. What you're trying to, what we're trying to protect is something that's pretty rare in York County. There's very few places of 500 acres that aren't totally developed. There's not a house in the middle. They're all on the waterfronts, and that's what we had hoped that we could talk to Titan about to try to negotiate that. We would have loved to let them have a house on every one-acre lot outside if we could preserve the interior. We tried to do that with Duke, and they, they wouldn't talk to us about it. So, I strongly encourage green space. 20% means that they could clearcut four of the five acres. So, I would encourage a much higher number, 40%. It says on this, that apparently doesn't matter. It says no further subdivision of the lots shown hereon is allowed, and this is where I again strongly, strongly recommend that we get deed restrictions, please, so we don't have to keep coming before you so that we can preserve our low density for safety reasons and certainly environment. It also says water and sewer will be by private individual well and septic. So, that's a good thing, too. Again, our goal has always been and still is low density. And the last thing I want to say before I go is, I want to thank Allison. I think this is the last time I'm going to hopefully be standing before you while you're still sitting up there. So, thank you very much for your, your work. You've always worked for responsible development, and that's, that's what I hope. I don't know if Mr. Litten is here watching. I would hope he would come to these, but maybe he'll watch that, that he will understand that just because you didn't win an election doesn't mean that it's not important and that he has to represent all his constituents. And there's, there's a whole bunch of constituents that wants low density. And there's, there's a whole bunch of constituents that wants low density, responsible development. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is anyone else who wishes to speak? If you'll come forward.
My name is Michael Copeland, twenty-six fifty-one Cozy Cove. I live on the west side of the bridge that Mark was talking about. I'd like to say thank you to the council for your leadership and commend you for all the effort you do. I know it's not easy. I would echo Mark's sentiments. I am concerned based on what I'm hearing about gaps that need to be plugged, zoning gaps, restriction gaps, these deed restrictions. I really want to see that happen. We have a jewel in that area. And then just let me indulge. I grew up, well, we've lived here thirty-one years. I grew up in North Mecklenburg. I learned to waterski on Lake Norman and that place up there, they allowed it to become a holy mess. And if you don't get a grip right now, you just drive up there to Brawley School Road and you are looking at Lake Norman, I mean, Lake Wiley in, in about ten years, that's what you're looking at. Be very careful about what you allow there, okay? Because it is a doggone mess. There's a half a million people up there and you're gonna have one big swell of five hundred thousand people in District Two. But be very, very careful. Okay, so with that, I want to thank you again and, and I look forward to the next hearing because I'll be here. Thank you.
Anyone else? Please go forward.
Good evening. My name is Susan Mode and I live at twenty-three oh-three Santar. And I'm here to say that I agree with the designation of five acre lots. It's not what we wanted from the beginning of this fight, but I'm satisfied with where it's landed. I also would ask for deed restrictions and open space, the same as the previous speakers. But I also have a question and it might tie in to the questions about thirty-eight lots and then the number forty next across from Steve's. My property borders lot number two, which I don't even see designated on this schematic. So I have a question about really what's gonna happen to lot two, which has signs that say lot two A, B, C, and D. So there's four additional lots from one previous. So I guess I would ask you, do you know why the red line starts beyond lot two?
And if I could just interrupt y'all. Josh Edwards over here, ma'am, sorry. This isn't necessarily a question and answer session, so I, you know, I would encourage y'all, if you had questions, please reach out to planning staff. We can give you their information.
Well, that's what I'm doing now. I'll leave it at that.
The goal tonight is not to answer specific questions, but if you want to share.
I'll leave it at that. And that's my question. I don't see any designation of lot two which surrounds my property and is currently divided into four lots. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wish to speak? I, I see ya. Because I'm looking straight ahead, sir.
You know, first of all, my name is Bruce Bryant. I bought my property out on Concord Road, off of Concord Road, actually on King Fisher Drive in nineteen ninety-two. And my real estate agent, I questioned, what about all this interior land that's out here? What's gonna happen to it? They said absolutely nothing. It can't, we can't put anything on the interior. That's a buffer zone for that nuclear plant. Well, the Catawba Nuclear Plant changed supervision, changed the head of the, of the whole Duke Power Embassy. And the new guy that walked in said, "Sell everything we're not using." They wasn't using this land because it was a buffer and they didn't consider that use, I assume, when they decided to sell all this property. As most of you know, I was sheriff here for twenty years and I tried to negotiate with Duke Power Company, the Catawba Plant, in regards to emergency egress, getting in and out if there was a disaster at that plant. First of all, they told me that you never be a disaster at that plant and I said hogwash. Don't tell me something that's not true. But in nineteen ninety-two, there was a whole different leadership of Duke Power. And of course Crescent Land and everything that was involved in the selling of the developments across the street from the nuclear plant, much closer even than ours. And I just shook my head. I said, "I can't understand this. Why are they not taking safety into consideration of that plant?" But I won't be but just another minute. We bought that property in nineteen ninety-two with that in our heads, but we didn't have it in writing. And of course, we should have been smarter than that to get it in writing, but the real estate agents couldn't put it in writing. But to make a long story short, we have been so disappointed that that property has changed hands. And now we're dealing with what kind of density are we gonna have? And somebody said, "Oh, you can, you can get in your boat and take off and get away from it." Folks, you can't, you can't outrun a disaster in a boat. And of course, my wife and myself have decided that I guess we'll just mix us a drink, sit out on the screen porch and put our heads between our legs and just forget about it. I'm asking you, please, to put restrictions that this can't be divided any further down than five acres. I'm like Mark. Mark's done a tremendous job being our go-to person in regards to this, this property. Thank you, Mark. But I'm just asking you to put that deed restriction on there. If you don't do that, then you know good and well, you got to deal with this time and time again on these, all these different plots. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
My name is Mac Pope. Our family has owned our property at thirty-eight ten Concord Road since nineteen seventy-eight. The growth and everything out here has just been unbelievable over the years. But now that this company that has bought the land, that wants to sell it, is not being truthful to potential buyers. Some of those lots that are on the waterfront cannot have a pier. They have been told that they can build piers. They have been told that they can dredge the waterfront, which they cannot. Not only is a deed restriction needed, but the truth needs to be put out that, you know, if a lot has a waterfront and that lot cannot have a pier, that needs to be known to the potential buyer. And I would like that to be added as well.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak? Do we have a motion to close?
We've closed.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing, no, a public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to approve with clarifications.
Second.
So clarifications, five acres would be forty-three lots. Thirty-eight would be five point six six per acre and thirty-four would be six point three two. The zoning application says thirty, let me scroll down for a second. I think it says thirty-four. Hold on one second. Yeah, thirty-four plus or minus. I think we need clarification on what we're being asked to vote on. Is it forty-three? Is it thirty-eight? Is it thirty-four? Or is it just up to, you said thirty-eight, but five acres is forty-three?
Yep. So there's a couple, there's a lot of different numbers because they don't have, at this point, a submitted plat for us to review and approve and stamp without the proper zoning. So the only request before you tonight is to rezone the property from RMX ten to RUD. That's it. So it doesn't come attached with a certain number of lots. That's why the, the package might say that they're proposing plus or minus thirty-four and the exhibit F is showing thirty-eight. These are all their hypothetical subdivisions once they have the RUD zoning district. Now, they could move forward with subdividing the property under the current zoning. They certainly could that, do that today without rezoning. But that would require them to provide open space and they do not intend to provide open space on the individual, because they only want individual lots. When you've got open space, it needs to be its own separate lot. It needs to be accessed by all the residents of the subdivision. They're not looking to do that traditional small lot development. They're looking to do the larger lots with no open space. So that's the request to go to RUD.
Right. And I hear the citizens saying they don't want anything that's smaller than five acres, but that's forty-three. That's forty-three parcels. How long will it be before you have a plat? Because I know we have three readings. This reading tonight may have two more.
Yeah, so the plat's not part of the rezoning process, so they could submit it after a rezoning is approved. They could never submit one. That's just, the timing is entirely dependent on the applicant's decision to move forward with subdivision of the property. And unlike most developments where you've got one large parcel and there's a total acreage and you can kind of do the math quickly of how many units based on the minimum lot size you might get out of it. Here, you got different lots on different locations and they're kind of spread out and some are on one side of the road and there are on the other. So that math is not quite as easy. But with the RUD zoning district, the minimum lot size would be one acre. So go up from there.
All right, one last question, because we talked about this four or five months ago. Roads and infrastructure, does that take away from the acreage? Right?
When you, when you develop it, yes.
Yes. So it's not forty-three then. It is probably thirty-eight or thirty-four, roughly thirty-four. Okay, that helps me out. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Roddy.
Listening to the different speakers, I understand some of the various concerns over the years about what they were told when they purchased, things that obviously looking to change now versus years ago. And I know the concern is potential buyers, you know, downgrading it or being able to put more houses or more development. I just wanted Jonathan to kind of address the concern that if it goes below, if someone wished to divide this up below five acres, what would that property owner have to do and provide to be able to get down below five acres? I know there's a water sewer concern. There's, you know, and at today's cost, if someone wanted to go in and, and do this and make it less than five acres, providing water and sewer and all the other things that they would have to provide, that cost is probably through the roof. Not even imagining five more years down the road before someone's able to do this. So kind of just speak to what someone would have to do to get down below five acres. Because I think once people hear this, they'll realize this is probably not going below five acres.
Yeah, and I think a lot of the residents of the community are, are aware that there was an approved preliminary plat a couple of years ago with the current zoning to do small lot development. And they had shared septic lines, community systems, things like that. Ultimately, that developer couldn't make it work, I assume, for financial reasons, but I don't know that for a certainty. So there's already history with this exact site of a plat already being approved and the developer couldn't make it work. Also, there's a challenge if they wanted to bring utilities, they'd have to come across that bridge, is my understanding. And there's a challenge with DOT and that bridge and being able to bring water and sewer service across. So that makes small lot development that much more of a challenge, cost aside.
And one more thing, you know, I know a lot of residents, everybody wants to have all the information before anything goes forward, but a plat approval is not warranted or part of this process. I know I heard several people say, "What's gonna happen with this lot? What's gonna happen with that lot?" Right now, the rezoning, just what it is a rezoning, there's no plat on the table. All this is still speculative, preliminary, but I think we've kind of got an idea of how many lots. Like, you know, Councilman Huckabee just mentioned, some of the lots, if you're just doing the raw numbers, you say, "Well, they can get more than thirty-eight or forty because of five acres." You're gonna lose some of that with the roads and some of the things that has to be done. So even if it was forty or thirty-eight, you know, we're not talking about a huge significant difference if it was thirty-eight, if it was forty or forty-one. And I'll just reassure everyone that our staff does a very good job of making sure a lot of i's are dotted, t's are crossed. No one's trying to backdoor, pull things over. But I do know, and I can share this publicly, that the cost to run water sewer naturally without doing some kind of shared septic. And I haven't, I've been on this council a long time. We haven't approved any kind of shared septic system or water system since I've been on this council. So that's a real big stretch. To think someone can come in here and this council or this staff would approve a setup like that in an area like this. I'd just like to reassure people that this, this council, this staff does an outstanding job of vetting to make sure. We try to close off any loopholes that somebody may be thinking about down the road. And I know that doesn't give a lot of peace of mind because, let's face it, this is one of the least trusted businesses in America right now that we're doing. So I understand the skepticism of saying, "What if they do this down the road? What if they do that?" You know, realtors will tell you anything, sellers will tell you anything, but, you know, we're years down the road from what was probably told to Sheriff Bryant back in ninety-two. And new property owners taking over, they're gonna look to do something. Can you imagine owning two hundred and, I think, two hundred and nineteen or two hundred and fifteen acres in today's economy? It's worth a lot of money and people are gonna try to maximize and do whatever they can do with it to, to make a buck. You know, they didn't, they weren't given this property. They're gonna try to recoup something and, and make some money and do what they're gonna do. But five acres is a lot of land. And if you're concerned about density with a five acre development, I can, I can take you to some areas that we've approved one acre tracts. And you talk about density, five acres is not a lot of houses when you're talking about two hundred and fifteen, two hundred and nineteen acres. So density, and I understand the deed restrictions, and I'm sure some of that will come into play and get developed into this plan once it has to come back to us for some kind of plat approval and all those kind of things. So just wanted to share that. I know a lot of people are just getting familiar with or learning how this process works, but part of what some of the questions are being asked are not able to be answered at this part of the process. But they will be answered and shared with the public as the next step, the next phase comes through. So rest assured, these, all the questions that you guys have right here tonight will get answered at some juncture in the process before this thing's approved. And you see in trucks and clearing and all that stuff going on. So just wanted to kind of share that with everybody.
Ms. Love?
Five acres, the largest minimum that York County has, and this has been a long time coming. When I first got on council, we were close to that, that big neighborhood meeting over at Allison Creek Church when we were introduced as community residents to Titan. And you would think that a neighborhood that's that close to a nuclear power plant would be most concerned about what might happen at that nuclear power plant. But instead, people before you tonight and myself have been concerned about who those new neighbors might be and how many of them there can be. So this has been an ongoing effort by a developer. It's been an ongoing effort by the community who lives there and an ongoing effort and negotiation on my part. And I think what we've come to, all in agreement, is five acre lots. Titan has agreed to deed restrict those lots to five acres. And when we talk about open space, open space is something that the county requires when you've got a whole bunch of half acre lots and you need a little bit of green space so people can walk down and maybe walk their dogs down and have a little open area to chat with a neighbor. But when you've got five acre lots, you know, it's funny, you don't see those people very much. They let their dogs out to roam, roam around a little on their own and they're not walking down to a green space or an open space anywhere. So for the majority of people that live down Concord Road, five acre lots deed restricted works. For Titan, deed restricted, five acre lots work. And I'm not gonna be on council, but this is called Legacy Point. And I think the people that ultimately moved here will be very happy to live out a legacy of what this community already cherishes and values, and that will be a home on a five acre minimum lot. So I'm asking council to support this on behalf of my constituents and Titan.
Hi, any other comments?
I will be supporting this with deed restrictions. I would love to see some additional green space included in this. I too am from the Brawley School area of Mooresville. I know all about. I know all about how that looks and Marshall Steam Station was, actually, my husband used to work at Marshall Steam Station. So I ask for the future of Lake Wiley that we totally never make this area a copy of that area, because it is a disaster. Because if you go there to visit a friend, you have to leave at two o'clock in the afternoon to get back home by seven. That is no joke. It's terrible. So that's my two cents.
I'd be supporting it with deed restrictions, which most of y'all know, I'd rather see a ten acre lot. I ain't much on none of this identity, I think everybody knows that, but with deed restriction, I'd be out.
Tommy, if somebody wants to buy two, welcome by.
Of course, I support this. Five acre lots are, to me, a no-brainer when it comes to this area. And I do think that there's some questions from the community that still need to get answered, and I think having some clarification on the deed restriction and what that looks like, sounds like the owner is amenable to that. So we have two more readings after this to kind of get those things clarified. All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We move now to public hearing, item number four, rezoning action. Hold a public hearing and consider first reading, case number twenty-four dash thirty-three, tax map number four zero one zero 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 seven, to rezone from A G C to R U D, a two acre portion of a twenty-one acre parcel in District Three.
Yeah, so this application is on Carson Road, and as you mentioned, it's just a two acre portion of an overall twenty-eight, twenty-one acre parcel. So here's an aerial, and that's what their proposed subdivision would look like, the area in red on the right-hand side is a proposed plat, so that's what that two acre area would look like, that's the subject area of the rezoning. The applicant proposes to subdivide these two acres off to build one new home, but the A G C district requires a minimum of five acres, so that's why they are requesting to rezone to R U D. Staff recommends denial of the application. It's not consistent with the comp plan and the future land use map. The future land use map designation here is agriculture, which aligns with the A G C district that is currently there and surrounding area. The proposed two acre lot size is not similar to the immediate vicinity, and the owner does retain sufficient acreage to subdivide into two five-plus acre lots by right without any rezoning. And approval of this request may be considered spot zoning. By a five to zero vote, planning commission also recommends denial.
Any questions for staff before we open public hearing? Mr. Roddy.
Any particular reason why they wanted to stop at two acres on a twenty-one acre track? If they would have went up to four, five acres?
Five acres.
Four, five acres?
I do not know the reason for the two acre request as opposed to more. You might ask the applicant, I believe they're here.
All right.
Typically, we don't ask questions back and forth of folks, and I do, I've been a little slack on that, but I think we need to make sure, any questions that council has, if they have any other questions, before we open it up. I would like to know did staff let the property owner know the situation with spot zoning? Did they, did they advise them before they paid their funding? This just seems like, I'd just like to know where they advised that this is unlikely to be rezoned.
Not privy at this moment to the conversation between the applicant and rezoning staff before they submitted, I'm happy to follow up.
Okay, any other questions before we open up public hearing?
I would say it's interesting you said that, because I saw, I think the fee was six hundred dollars to file, and you would think you'd want to know, well, is this doable? Well, you can, you can go with a five acre lot, you don't have to do any rezoning. Two acres is, you know, maybe spot zoning and then they don't spend six hundred dollars.
Right.
So I was thinking the same thing, actually, when I read their notes.
I'd say I'd make a point about that.
Well, if there are no other questions for staff?
Yeah, I just have questions. So Jonathan, in talking about the five acres, it looks like the road frontage is an issue maybe, so if they were going to do five acres, it would be just be, you know, a little twice the length, like a real, much longer piano key there. So, I mean, I'm thinking that could be a reason to not do that, because that might be kind of destroying.
It's only about a hundred feet on the, on the road.
Any other questions?
Well, that's a good point, she just, she's asking, so I think I remember reading, it's only like a hundred feet of road frontage, is that right? So is that below the minimum? Maybe it was one-ten, it was close to a hundred, I know that. I can pull it up right quick.
Yeah, it looks like it's, so the proposed lot is a hundred feet of road frontage.
Right.
It looks like the rest of the lot as it is today is at least three hundred. Just visually guessing.
I think when the applicant, when he comes up, because I spoke with him, he can explain.
But if it's below the minimum, we, we couldn't approve it anyway. Is it below the minimum for road frontage?
Yeah, I don't, I can follow up with the answer to that question.
I'm sorry to put you on the spot, I just.
That's all right.
I don't know, I'm new to council.
Well, I guess these are questions that we continue to monitor. Are there any additional questions for staff before we open public hearing? Then we can circle back once we hear the public. All right, let's go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this request? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor? If you please come forward and give your name and address.
My name is Adam, speak, current address is sixteen sixty-one California Road. First time doing this, I'm a little nervous. I actually thought I was going to be kind of a little fish in the big pond, the last one, but I see now mine's become kind of a hot topic, so. So to kind of answer some of the questions and to kind of give a backstory on what's going on, the owner of the property, Mr. Green, and myself were old neighbors at California Road. Became, my wife and I are from the area, and we've become almost like family with each other. When he moved away, bought this land, we always agreed we'd kind of live closer with each other. And so one of the reasons why we chose this is because it's the land he owns and he's agreed to give us, sell us some land, that kind of stuff. To your question about the two acres and the packet I have, the packet you have in front of you is something I kind of put together, just to, as some pictures. Now, it's kind of for reference, but I'll, I'll utilize it so you can kind of see what's, what's going on. If you turn to page, let's see if I can find the best one for you, sorry, while I flip here. So I'm going to reference pages eleven and twelve, and then, so we'll start with eleven. So as you see, there's a pond, probably three, a third of the way from the, from Carson Road back to the property, and as I kind of mentioned, the property's kind of long and skinny. And then past that, the property, the topography of the land kind of drops off kind of drastically towards a kind of a bottom. And I understand that, you know, houses can be built anywhere, but, so the owner, Mr. Green, has actually, has plans, if you look at page twelve, and you see the kind of opened area at the bottom of the, at the back of the property, he has plans to build a house there as well, which is kind of the only other sustainable or, you know, flat area to kind of, you know, do, build a house on. If you, I would like to reference page ten, so if you would flip to ten. Part of the, the other reason why we've chosen the two acres, if you see there, this is kind of the top of the property close to Carson Road, you see the driveway to the left side of the property there, that's the driveway that Mr. Green is going to utilize. And to the right there, just on the inside of the property line, it's kind of hard to see because it's in the shadow of the trees, but there's a existing driveway there. And that's the driveway we plan to utilize. So would be no impact to encroachment permits and stuff to the road, we're, we're going to be utilizing that existing driveway. And so we went too much further left, we'd be encroaching into his driveway, and then going further back towards his property, getting into the pond. And so just from he and I talking and kind of coming to terms on which, you know, what he was willing to give up and what I could afford or what I wanted to buy, two acres was kind of the, the number we, we kind of settled on. So there's no rhyme or reason exactly, you know, other than those things as to why we did the two acres. I was under the impression that the minimum road frame was a hundred feet, that's why it's a hundred feet. I wasn't, when I, okay, okay, that's what I, that's what I was, I was under the impression of. And then, just a couple of things I'd like to point out, and I apologize if I missed some questions, we can, I'll come back to it, but the land is, if you look back at some of the historical photos and stuff, there's been houses, there was additionally, beforehand, there were two mobile homes on the property, and I'm assuming they were used for rental purposes, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent, but from what I can see on the tax map, the first one was there in nineteen seventy, and the, and they were there as far as up to twenty eighteen. So if you look at sheet seven, this is a screenshot from the tax map of nineteen seventy, you can see a residence out towards the road more. And then if you flip over to page eight, this is a screenshot from the tax map of nineteen ninety, and you can see the house that has the red triangle kind of, it's eight twenty-five, that's where the planned, the proposable for the house would be. So as you can see, the land use has been, you know, residential or has been something there for, for a number of years and up until twenty eighteen. So we're, my, my goal was to, you know, there's already a well there, I think they're septic, but it's probably not going to be, you know, be utilized. There's already a driveway there, so there's already private utilities on the, on the property and stuff, and so it's not, it's not like we're going out trying to cut down, you know, but, you know, two acres just to trees, just to kind of do something that's never been, you know, something that wasn't there before. I don't remember what all the questions were, I apologize, if anybody wants to, if that answers your question as to why we did the two acres, if you want some more explanation, I can try to give it to you, but that's what I have.
Thank you, sir. Any other, any, any, does that conclude your comments?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor? Motion in a second to close public hearing, any discussion? All in favor, we're just closing the public hearing. All in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to deny.
We have a motion in a second to deny. Mr. Atkins?
I would like, well, I spoke with the young man, he's very pleasant, everything, and I hope that he can give what he, hoping to stay beside his friend. But I also explained that the two residents being there, because I know the place, I grew up there all my life, that was before they changed, you know, you could have two dwellings, what we've been speaking about on five acres ag land. But I hope that, Adam, you've heard from the remarks of people in us trying to protect the ag land. It's, you, you start one way and it just explodes into something, because all it needs is a hook.
A second to that, so I'll, I'll speak. I think that we have to be very careful that we don't water down what's probably our most valuable zoning in the county. So most of what's around this is, is, you know, more than, more than, a lot more than an acre, but a lot of it is a lot more than five acres. So I just, I feel like we are, you know, we set a precedent there, and then, you know, it just, that just keeps going. It goes from, it grows faster than anything. And it, it, you know, because the next person that comes along says, well, you know, the county supports it, because they say, well, yeah, you're, there's, there's more of that right here. And, and so we just, we continue to water, water down our zoning. So we've got, you know, agricultural zoning for a reason, and I think we need to just be very firm in protecting that.
I don't want to, I don't want to say deny it without offering some type of solution, but if there's only going to be two houses on this property, and you spoke about the back end of the property, well, most are to the middle, the topography kind of changes where you can't do anything with it. If the goal is to put a house up front for yourself, and the original property owner's going to put one more to the back, seems like he can, you know, you know, everybody wants to sell and split up property by acreage, but if that's unusable, it's unusable to use, unusable to him, maybe he could increase those boundaries to get to that five acres. Essentially, you're still going to have about two acres, because the rest of it's going to be unusable because of the topography. So I would, I would go back to him and say, hey, I'm not going to be able to use this rest of this acreage, but I can't put my house on it if I don't have this piece of property. It's no value to me as the incoming property owner, it's no value to you as the current property owner, because the topography is not going to let you do anything with it. So you're just going to need a little more acreage to be able to get to the house, and I know selling you two acres for one price, nobody wants to give you five acres for that same price, because in their mind it's five acres. But if I can't use but two, the other five is, the other three is kind of like a trade-off, it's kind of a wash, but I would talk to the, to the property owner and say, let's go up to five, even though I can only use basically two. Because the other three, and I know you don't want to come putting a property line in the middle of the, the water that's on the property, a little lake pond that's, that's over there, but I would go back and talk to him and say, hey, let's, how close can we get to, I need to get to five acres to be able to do this, if, if, you know, you guys are friends, because I can look at this property now and say, even if you come back and say, hey, I want to put two more houses and make it three, it's going to be virtually impossible, topography issues, the, the shape of the lot, twenty-one acres is a lot of land, but the shape of it kind of restricts what you can do with it anyway. So I would just honestly add that conversation to increase that, it's going to be a long, skinny lot, because you can't go left or right, because now you're messing with the road frontage of the other lot. Just try to come back a little deeper to where you can hit that five acre mark, and you and your friend can, you know, still be close and, and make it work. But as of right now, it's going to be a little difficult for this council to approve a two acre lot, simply because the spot zoning and what it creates in the area. And you got to understand that if we do this two acre track, if you look around, there's a lot of other bigger tracks that somebody may want to come in and break off two acres, and now you've got two acres, two acres, two acres, a mist of a landmass that has bigger acres. But yeah, accept property owner to at least get you, get you to five acres, you're going to be neighbors anyway, you have to meet up at the pond and fish and do whatever you're going to do, but that would be my offer to, to kind of help out the situation. But it looks like tonight it won't get approved at the two, but if you can get to the five, you won't even have to come back and ask us, could you do it?
What, what continues to bother me about this is, I, I just don't even know, I hope that, I hope that you were told that this is not going to happen. It bothers me when folks get, you know, pay money to do this and they are, and I want to make sure that they understand the, the concerns here, and it's not that we don't want to work with constituents. And I understand what you're saying, is that here's a twenty-one acre parcel that under A G C would allow theoretically more than this, but the problem is, once you rezone it to R U D in the middle of these large A G C properties, it becomes virtually impossible for us to, to do what we said we were going to do to the public, which is to make sure that we stand firm on the comprehensive plan and that we don't extend that. Now, there are things that we're reviewing to make sure that we get back to the property right, so I just, it just bothers me that, I mean, I wish you had the opportunity to withdraw it or continue to talk, because at this, at this stage, I don't even know how we would, how we would approve this. So the motion on the table is to, I don't know of any other way around it, motion is to deny. All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, the rezoning is denied. Move now to public hearing, item number five, rezoning action. Hold a public hearing and consider first reading twenty-four, case number twenty-four dash thirty-four, tax map number seven two zero 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 seven zero zero eight, two sixty, to rezone from R S F forty to O I, three parcels that total six point five acres in District One. Three parcels that total six point five acres in District One. Mr. Bono?
Yes, these three parcels are sandwiched in between Alterra Road and Pleasant Road, uh, near the state line. So the applicant proposes to combine the three parcels and develop a site with offices and a daycare. Here is a, uh, proposed sketch of what that might look like. And here's that in context with the surrounding area. As you can see, that serves as a nice transition between the larger office building on the north side of Alterra and the surrounding townhomes and single-family residences, uh, on the other side of Pleasant. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning request. It is consistent with the comp plan and future land use map. Now, that at first might seem, um, that it doesn't match, given the neighborhood residential designation, but the land use map is more than just the colors on the map. There are words in the plan as well, and one of those, uh, is that neighborhood residential considers that commercial, office, and civic uses may be appropriate along major streets, and certainly we have that here. The proposal does serve as a transition between the large office on the north side of Alterra, which I mentioned, and there are larger warehouses further north on Pleasant Road and on down into the residential, uh, communities. The proposed uses will serve the local residents, and by a five to zero vote, planning commission also recommends approval.
Any questions for staff before we open public hearing? Hearing none, is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this request? Is there any, if you'll come forward, please give your name and address.
Hi, Thomas Todd Johnston, uh, six-eighteen Potter Place Road, Katava Village. Um, I got a, just a few concerns, um, with regards to the plan. So I guess the first one is, I was on our HOA board up until about a couple of years ago. Because of the traffic on Alterra and Pleasant, we had to actually put gates in, because we were getting cut-throughs through the neighborhood. We had issues with school kids almost getting hit, because people just didn't wanna wait. And we now have gates front and back, uh, to cancel and get rid of the cut-throughs. The other thing that, um, I'm a little concerned with is the impact on the green space. When they built the, the village, there really wasn't a whole lot of thought aside shrubbery around the townhomes. Um, there, there's not a whole lot of green space. That area, we do have a line of trees behind it. And I, I, I just think, chances are they're gonna more or less clear-cut and put up the, um, they're gonna need to put up parking. Uh, based on what I saw, it was a daycare as well as, um, possible medical centers. And, um, I, they're gonna need parking, and I just don't see how this is going to help to the green space. The other thing, I think, uh, a lot of the folks that have properties that abut that green space, there's a concern there as far as, uh, property values, uh, maybe going down. And, and finally, I mean, I know across, uh, Alterra, there is a internet company. It's, it's a two-story facility. It, it's not, um, i- it's not an eyesore for us, because right now we actually don't see it. My fear is that when they come in and put the new, um, put in the new buildings as well as the parking, that's gonna be right out everybody's back window. So, um, I think that's all I have for you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak against? If you'll come forward.
Maxim Colliata, six-one-five Potter Place Road. Um, we live in the same neighborhood as the previous speaker. Um, but regarding this zoning, my first concern is actually regarding the consistency with the comprehensive plan. Um, I know it, I've read the staff report, which references the plan and the neighborhood residential idea of like how the, the, how the communities should be developed. And the idea and the attributes of the neighborhood residential communities that the York County should develop implies that the, like, the integrated communities where people can move around with sidewalks or bicycles and like being with, uh, within the same community. When the businesses are like accessible by foot from within the community. And I think that's the idea about the, being connected by the major roads. It's when there is a same street where there is a residential and the business on the same street. With this zoning, there, there is no connection with how the residents of, around the area can access this by foot. So this is, like, this is like contradicting the comprehensive plan. On my opinion. Um, the, yeah, the next one in the staff report, it was mentioned that the suggested idea will be a buffer between the other larger, like, manufacturing or commercial businesses that are north the road, which, um, which appears like the, the current forestation and the green area in the, in the current zoning provides enough buffer. So rezoning does not contribute to any buffer or like to the residents' benefit. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak against? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor? Please come forward.
Uh, Nevin Gentry with Kekin Wood Engineering, Rock Hill. Um, I just wanted to come up and let you know that we're representing the client, um, developer here who intends to develop this property. And, um, we think we've done a good job with complying with the future land use plan, comprehensive plan. Really, I don't think deviated the plan at all. Um, so wanna let you all know that we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. I know we've spoken with Tom at length, and he seems very supportive of this and has, I, I can't speak for him, but, um, it's, it seems like we've done our job and, um, we've worked planning. We intend to keep doing that, um, sticking with all the ordinance requirements. You know, there will be extensive tree safe requirements that really wouldn't be in place as the zoning sits today. You know, somebody can come in and just, and do whatever, uh, as it is. So there will be tighter restrictions on, on what can be done once this is rezoned. So if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to us, have to answer.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor?
Move close.
Motion in a second to close public hearing, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to approve.
A second. Motion in a second. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Mr. Roddy.
I see the, the note says, uh, proposal serves as a transition between larger. So what exactly is going on this property? Do we, Jonathan, do we know what exact proposal? Okay.
Yeah, so the applicants are not locked into any proposed use, but the, uh, proposed sketch plan here showing a daycare building. Um, on the, uh, top of the, uh, sketch here with an outdoor play area, some parking. Uh, you can see they got tree safe, uh, in the hatching, um, the left side and two, uh, two-story office buildings.
Any other discussion?
Jonathan, will you go back to the picture of the live, like, the live picture, the real-life picture? I'm very familiar with the neighborhood. I used to live at two-fifty-eight River Clay. Yeah, I was one of the first, first owners in that neighborhood. And, um, you know, when you, when you go to, to buy a townhome, they don't tell you everything. And the constant during a portion of the year is Thunder Road, or Top Gun, I'm sorry, Top Gun. I don't know if y'all hear Top Gun, but I backed up to that little retention pond right there. I was on the, not the, not right in the corner, but the one to the right of that, and I walked my dogs around that little retention pond, I don't know, hundreds and hundreds of times. Um, and you do hear carolins from right here. And so my concern would be that this buffer, you know, when you, when you talk about, I, I have a concern anyway about connectivity in the county. I think our connectivity policy, um, needs a little, needs a little massaging, um, on behalf of residents. But when all of, right now, that's all trees, and when those trees are gone, you may as well have a lifetime membership, carolins, because it's gonna be, it's gonna be noise. The building beside, behind over here, this large warehouse, um, very little traffic coming and going there. There's all, there's usually, this is an amazing picture, because there's usu- usually no cars in that parking lot. Um, and there are little bunnies that live all up and down Alterra, out that back gate. Hundreds of bunnies out there. And my concern is that this is a, um, is a different kind of connectivity. But I do think it is a, it is a, an impact on, on the people who live in this. It's hard to go from townhomes, and these are nice townhomes. It's hard to go from townhomes, um, to parking and, and business, business like this. That corner lot, by the way, is for sale. So maybe they should move it on down that way and leave a bigger buffer right there. But that corner in that little triangle right there is actually on the market, um, for sale right now. But, um, my, my concern would be the size of the buffer and just taking out all, all of those trees and opening it up. And, and when you talk about the warehouses that are, um, presumably north of this, those are, those are, like, those are on Carolins Boulevard. They're, they're not on Pleasant Road. So it's a little bit of a mis- misnomer here. But, um, anyway, I, I, I'm not gonna support it. I would love to support it if there was more of a buffer and I felt like that all of these residents, um, here would be, oh, just a little better protected from, um, the, the, I know, and you're gonna utilize it, because you've probably got kids and they would, they would probably go there. But that, that being, um, you know, not, that, I don't believe that offsets the quality of life that this property takes, takes away from you, um, on a daily basis.
Any other discussion?
Re- regardless, I mean, we all like to try to say what people should do with their property. One thing's for sure, something's gonna go there. Something's gonna go there. Um, whether it's, um, something that's open from seven AM to five PM or something that's open from six in the morning to eleven PM at night. Um, I think for the neighbors who have any kind of concern as to what goes here, I would, I would encourage you to look at the hours of operations of whatever's gonna go here. You'd probably be impacted by more traffic going in and out all day, all night. I don't think what's being proposed here, looking at it, is gonna give you that upset stomach feeling of something else that may want to go here, that we may approve, that may upset your stomach while you're living in this area. But, um, you know, we can always adjust buffers. Um, I'm all for trying to make a situation work with a property owner, trying to get them to achieve what their ultimate goal is, because let's face it, um, this is a viable development. Whether you like what goes there or not, something's gonna go there. And if you don't like what's being proposed to go there, buy it yourself and sit on it and don't do anything with it. But that's not a viable option in today's economy. People are gonna do what they ultimately want to try to do. I'd just say be careful of what you turn down, because you may get something that you really don't want, that really upsets you, um, that make it go here. But, um, if the buffer is the issue, we can work on the buffer. That's just leaving more trees, cutting out a little bit more parking. Um, you know, people have a problem with looking at a building. You know, a building, I mean, you can't hide them all the time, but I just, I just warn you, be cautious of what you turn down, because we've had people come back and say, we wish we'd have went with the first option, because what we got now is atrocious, it affects our community, it affects our property value. So if this is not a detriment to your property value, your quality of life, I, I would urge you to consider what's being proposed now, um, because it's laid out. So I don't, I don't have a problem supporting it.
Any other discussion? Uh, I did reach out to, uh, Councilman Aldette. He is unable to be here tonight. He testified positive for COVID, and, uh, did we speak with him? He's supportive of first reading on this, and his, uh, I do think it's important to have a council member whose district this is in to be here to, um, be a part of the discussions. I think some of the rationale that I think this supports this is, is the fact that the RSF forty, I mean, the, the alternatives are high-density housing or office industrial that would allow to meet a need in the community and also provide, um, a, a different use in that area. So, um, we do have three readings to move forward with. This is the first reading of that. Um, he will be made aware of the comments that the community has, has come out and, and spoken. Um, but I will support first reading on this. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We have one though. One, two, three, four, five, five to one. Pass is five to one. Uh, we move now to item number six. Counsel to hold a public hearing and approve third reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of an infrastructure credit agreement by, between York County, South Carolina, and York Hotel Group LLC, including any related or affiliated entities previously identified by the county as Project Rose, whereby certain property will be subject to certain statutory payments that will have taxes and benefit from certain special source credits. The placement of property comprising Project Rose within the boundaries of a multi-county park and other matters related thereto. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this request? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor? Please come forward.
Good evening. Um, Trip McGarity, nine-twenty-one Harper Road, York, South Carolina. A lifelong resident of Western York County, and you guys are probably getting tired of seeing me up here. But, um, I'm part of the effort to bring a hotel into downtown York. You know, first of all, I wanna thank you, county management, um, the, uh, a- all the efforts that have been made for the consideration of this infrastructure credit agreement. You know, in cooperation with the city, state, and now the county, um, we will bring an incredible asset into York and thirty-five jobs to boot. It is an amenity needed to support growth, but also drive further downtown investment and tax base. I mentioned before in previous comments up here that, uh, over the next ten years, the hotel itself should provide about two-point-nine million dollars in revenue for the county where there is presently zero. The fifteen to seventeen million dollar investment will be a unique, new, green market, and unlike anything Western York County has seen. The agreement, uh, that's proposed will help, um, provide an early, solid foundation for such an interesting new type of investment. Uh, the infrastructure credit agreement has the support of city leaders, as evidenced in previous meetings when we had, um, city council, as well as mayor and those types, local business owners. We have letters to support, um, from those. And these people actually understand the, the terms of what's being proposed. Uh, we have been transparent through the entire process. Um, economic development has been great to work with, and I'm just excited that we're getting so close to making this happen. You know, I wanna thank you guys, uh, first of all, for your consideration, and, and not just your consideration about this, but also your service. I've had the pleasure of sitting through several meetings, and, um, you guys are, uh, are impressive the way you handle the situations, and, um, you don't, you don't get thanked enough for that. Um, and lastly, I'd just like to ask that you, um, support this. I think it's great for the city. I think it's great for the county, and it's just gonna be a wonderful asset for our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor?
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion in a second to close public hearing, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second? Are you the second?
I'm second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Mr. Roddy.
I'll just say, um, I received a phone call from Trip about maybe almost two months ago. We had a, a good conversation. Real excited to hear about. Real excited to hear about a hotel coming to York, Western York, actually, downtown. I was a little reserved to, to, to throw my support behind this incentive, because we've never done, we've never done anything along the lines with a hotel. Knowing the conditions, trying to spark something over in the area, I still have some questions. Because we all know, once we do something one time, somebody else sees it and says, hey, I have a similar idea, I have a similar situation, I'm looking to make an investment. We just gotta answer the question, are we opening the floodgates for other opportunities or other situations that we may not be willing to do for someone else with this hotel? It's just, it's a hotel. I understand it's a huge cost, it's a huge investment. Going out on a limb is a huge risk, business risk, big reward. So my, my question going forward is how are we gonna balance this out? And are we opening up potential floodgates for other business, like-minded business? We want smaller businesses, and $15 million is not a small investment, it's still a substantial investment out of somebody's pocket. So my, my, my question and my challenge to staff is, is we're gonna have to be careful how we structure this. One, to be fair to, to, to Trip coming, and be fair to others that's coming. Would this council be willing to, to keep these doors and gates open for other investments that's gonna come, whether it's in York? Who needs it, or if it's going to Fort Mill, if it's going to Catawba, whether it's going to Tegucate, wherever it's going. I don't think the location should be the driving point. I think we gotta make sure we set the bar to where if somebody comes up in Rock Hill, if someone comes up in, in Catawba, Fort Mill, I think we need to look at the threshold more so than the location. Because we're driven by investment, job creation, not so much on location. So if we can keep that in mind, because somebody else is gonna see this and say, hey, I, my investment wasn't quite as big, I didn't get, or my investment's gonna be a little bigger, I wanna get. So we gotta make sure that we're tread lightly and willing to accept what's to come afterwards. Because I don't want to be in the business of picking winners and losers, who gets the deal, who don't get the deal. If the deal's set based on a number, everybody can get it based on that number and not so much the location. So I wanna preference or pre-reference that going forward, because I do think we're gonna see more come. And I don't want to water down a $15 million investment, because that's still an investment. So let's keep this in mind, council. So if we're gonna lower to 15 million, let's be prepared to, to do 15 million in Rock Hill, Fort Mill, Clover, Tegucate, wherever. So that's just my, my early warning, because I know we're gonna see this come up again. And this particular situation is gonna be referenced back to where you did it for, we know how that goes. So I'm just putting it out there.
I think our minimum investment size to get an incentive in York County is 10 million, so this is over the threshold of 10.
But we've never done it for a hotel. This is, this is a different versus a manufacturing or...
Well, believe me, but I was, I was amazed when I got the first call. But I, I finally, I said, if they're willing to try, can't blame them for that. And it, it should go good.
I, I just want to say that I don't feel like we've heard from the people of York. I feel like we've, we've seen the city council here and we've certainly heard from economic development. We've had a committee meeting and discussed, discussed it, and, you know, my concerns were similar, similar to Bump's, and that is the use. It's not the investment, but it's the use. So my question is, to the people of the city of York, what do you want? Do you want a hotel, or you not want a hotel? You know, we, we had a developer who bought a parcel in Lake Wylie and was gonna cram a hotel on a small parcel. And I was shocked first at the, the response from the community over the brand of the hotel, number one. But over the fact that it was a hotel, they did not want it to be higher than what's currently allowed. And it was a very hot topic that never came before council. But had it come before council, it, it was, it was a hot topic in the community, and I'm not talking about 100 people weighing in, I'm talking about hundreds of people weighing in. And it was, it was not a well-received use. City of York's a little different, Lake Wylie's not a city or a town. So I just would be more comfortable if some way we could facilitate hearing from the people who, who live in York. That would, that's my, that's what I feel like is the missing puzzle piece in this for me.
Well, when I first heard about this, my question would be for the investment. It was the investment. And I love York, the little town of York, it's quaint, it has a lot of history. My best friend and her husband got married here many years ago. And so I think there's, there's opportunity here. But having been in retail all my life and been dependent on that customer coming in the door, I have concerns for you guys, for the amount of investment that there is. And, and I just, I, I'm sorry, I can't see it, but I'm willing to, I mean, like Tommy said, if you guys are willing to make that investment, I'm just not sold on it. But, well, that's all I'm, all I got, so. It's so strange, okay, go ahead.
I, I think it would be helpful to hear from management side, I mean, you guys have supported this, and, and let's just get a bit, a little, little bit of information, feedback.
I'll give you, from people on College Street, my neighbors that live in York and the people that work in theory when we talk about this. The word excitement is the word that I would use to describe the overall feeling about this. I think the community's excited to have a hotel, they're excited for a lot of stuff coming in downtown York. I, of course, had a lot of the same questions that y'all have echoed our first meeting with them. I asked them a lot of very direct and blunt questions, because I don't want a closed hotel next door to us. You know, I think they have sort of proven their worth, and they've taken the prepping of questions. I know Tommy's blasted with a bunch of questions as well, and done a lot of research. I, I don't disagree with Mr. Roddy's concerns as well, that was the big hurdle they'd overcome this big hotel, that's why they're not getting a fee in lieu. They're, they're getting a credit, they're not getting a fee in lieu. So, you know, this has been definitely interesting and different, but, you know, $17 million, $15 million for the city of York is a significant investment. And the investors are local, and that's very meaningful, and they've got a lot of skin in the game and willing to see this through. So that's why management, myself, as a resident of York, support this.
As, as, this process apparently has been going on for a good, long time, and there has been extreme state support, there has been local support. And I think the amount of the special source revenue credits they're being given are, are minimal in consideration to what has ever been done. While this may be a first, I will say that the county is undergoing a strategic plan, which we anticipate approving, and taking a look at how we want to approach them and, and also recognizing differences. So those are questions that I do think, the questions being brought up here will continue to be had by our council moving forward. But this is something that I think we, in terms of hearing from the public, this was noticed publicly, there's been a lot of information that's been put out. I haven't heard anyone in the community reach out, objection, objecting to this. And, and I think the amount that's being provided has been whittled down so that we can give the community an opportunity to attract the business that they're looking to attract while not compromising the taxes. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. We move now to old business, we have items, we didn't have anything originally, but it looks like we've got item number three and five in consent. Item number three, rezoning action, consider third reading, case number 24-21, tax map number 376000060, to rezone from AGC to RUD, 3.0 acre portion of an 8.76 acre parcel in District 2. Do we have a motion?
Motion to deny.
Motion and a second to deny, any discussion?
Sure. This is very different from the surrounding area. Everything that's surrounding this is AGC. This was the one that we actually, that I deferred first time, because the sign was not, not visible. So it came back to a first reading where we had some discussion that was not 100%, we voted for it, because it was first reading. And then it ended up in a consent agenda, that's a little bit concerning. But I did miss that agenda meeting, so I, I'll, I'll take my responsibility for some of that. But it's just, it's, it's not in keeping with the zoning that is, that is around it. And I, I just, I don't think it's fitting for, for that. You know, every, everything on Glen Road is AGC, and to take one and divide it into three small lots is, is, I just don't think it's appropriate.
Any other discussion? I will say in terms of, I was asked, I asked some questions about this one too, because it does seem like this is another situation where it's of an RUD surrounded by a sea of AGC and why, where we were with this. Apparently, the, the process, as I understood it, was that it was deferred, first reading was deferred. Then when it was brought back, it was approved unanimously, so that, by, because when there is a unanimous approval, it goes to consent once council does that. But in this case, I, I do feel like, glad that it was pulled out so that we could address this. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We now move to item number five in consent, which is B number two, and old business. Counsel to amend and provide second reading of an ordinance to authorize the sale of property identified by tax map number 594-02-04-002 and situated on 166 and 210 Dotson Street, Rock Hill, South Carolina, to entertain an existing offer to purchase the parcel, to authorize the execution of the contract of sale indeed, to provide for a public hearing, and to provide for other matters relating thereto.
I'd like to request a deferral of this second reading to our next meeting on September 16th.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously.
Second reading to the second meeting.
Is there, is there confusion? Do we need to clarify anything? We, we moved, we deferred second reading to the next council meeting, that's the action we took.
Yeah. Our first meeting in September, September 16th, that's, that's the confusion.
All right.
Oh, I pulled it up, I didn't see that. Let me amend.
I think the motion was to the next meeting.
Let's, let's go to 16th, give it a month of time for due diligence.
Then we have to undo, we, I'm sorry. It was for the 16th?
Yeah.
All right, so we're good.
Yeah.
All right.
That's good.
All right, we move now to new business. Counsel to reject all bids received regarding bid number 2929 for the concrete pad addition to the recovered materials processing facility.
I thought we had 16.
We gotta go, that's, I gotta add that to the bottom of new business. So we're going back to number one in new business. Is there anything that management would like to provide in connection with this?
So we just want to share good news, right?
We like that.
We, we always like good news, so we're thankful, and we want to say thanks to y'all for approving a concrete crew in the budget. And so I'm gonna let Kevin talk a little bit about what that concrete crew is allowing us to do and the savings that it'll generate.
We had second concrete crew now working in public works, the first was really for sidewalks. The second, when that council approved, this was recent budget, is going to basically be for driveway acres. But this has proven to be very fruitful for the county, they're doing a good job. And this is work that they can do, it's gonna save the county about $300,000 on this one project. So appreciative for the support and the budget, and we put this request in there for approving that, it's already paying dividends. So wanted to make sure the public and the council is aware of how this has worked out so far, very happy with the results.
We always like hearing we're saving money. Do we have a motion?
Oh, move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Item number two, new business. Counsel to approve sole source award regarding the purchase of technology storage system for use by the York County Publix, York County's Public Safety Communications to Data Network Solutions, Inc. of Chap, Chap, is it Chapin or Chaplin? South Carolina, for a total cost of $241,159.42 as part of the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds program.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Item number three, council to award the purchase of cellular data hardware for use by the Public Safety Communications from Rock Brothers, Inc. of Millersville, Maryland via South Carolina State Contract, for a total cost not to exceed $404,159.87 as part of the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds.
Move to approve.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Now we go back to item number 16 in consent, which is the final item of new business. Consider approval to proceed with applying for and accepting, if awarded, the 2024 state and local cyber, cybersecurity grant to assist with purchase of additional cybersecurity equipment and software and committing to the 20% of local investment match.
Yes, Madam Chair, more good news. We found out recently, we do not need to include a match, so we don't need that 20% match. So we wanted to make sure to rectify that language in, in y'all's vote.
Okay, so the motion needs to be to approve with the exception that the 20% match is not necessary? Okay, do we have such a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. All right. Let me keep turning pages. Committee and other reports, are we deferring that, or some are prepared to give the report from economic development? Mr. Aldette is not here.
I would defer that to our, our next meeting.
All right, we will do that. Finance and Operations Committee, Chairwoman Allison Love.
So we met on Wednesday, August the 2nd, present were council members Aldette and Atkins. Motion was made by the committee to approve and recommend counsel for consideration of Fort Mill School District Impact League Resolution. And that motion carried. We also approved the minutes from the July 15th Finance and Operations Committee meeting, and that was it, it was a very short meeting.
Thank you, ma'am. Citizen concerns, I always hate it when we got two hours long and somebody has to sit and wait, be patient. But we are excited to have Da'Quan McKnight, who asked to appear during the citizen concerns, to thank the coun, council for discretionary funds for City Girl Garden and Urban Farm 803, and to provide an update on what those funds are being used for.
Yes, ma'am, my name is Da'Quan McKnight, and I am the owner and operator of City Girl Garden in Urban Farm 803. I reside in Rock Hill, South Carolina. I garden all year in over 30 garden raised beds, I'm a homesteader. I have chickens that lay eggs, I have quail, I sell my eggs. I invite classes to come to my garden, and I teach them about gardening and about canning and different things. I go out and do community events, and I work with adults and children out in the community, in the south side community of Rock Hill, which is impoverished community, which is in a food desert. So I teach them about food sustainability and about growing their own food, being healthier. And I did apply for the grant through you guys, and I was awarded a grant. And I just wanted to come and thank you guys for helping with the grant. I did want to share that the grant money would be used to help in my new endeavors. I am working with Kristin, who was here earlier, to lead a group of 4Hers in Rock Hill. We didn't have a group for Rock Hill, so I've been working with her doing the trainings to lead a 4H group in Rock Hill, just exposing them to the world of agriculture. Because I do raise pigs and goats for meat purposes, I have family that live here in Turza. Always say the countryside of York. But, and so we, I grew up with pigs and my family here in Turza. So I know a little bit about our farm animals, and so just exposing the 4Hers to raising farm animals. And then they'll have an opportunity this year to get a pig, to help to raise, and then we'll process that pig, and then they'll be... then we'll process that pig and then they'll be able to take that meat, um, to share with their families and be excited about what they've done. And I raise meat birds, so they'll have the opportunity to do all that and I'm super excited because those funds that you helped me with, um, to help get things for them and to help things, help get things with my garden because I have funded my garden and everything that I've done with building my garden and my farm for the past three years. So it really did help out. So I look forward to, uh, working with you guys and coming before you guys again, um, in the future. And so I just wanted to say thank you and say thank you to Councilmember Buck Roddy and to Ms. Karen over here, um, just emailing them, getting on their nerves. But I'm here tonight and again, I just want to say thank you all for, um, your assistance and helping me on my journey.
If I can add one thing.
Yes.
If I can add one thing, um, Ms. McKnight, she was part of, we all remember when Jonathan Azier started his, uh, gardening over at Emmett Scott. She was part of his group and she has grown into that and he is doing other things and so she's continuing to move the ball forward, um, over in the city of Rock Hill. So when, uh, she reached out about what she was doing on her own now, I just thought it would be a good idea and I know how this council, uh, support agriculture. So I thought it would be a great idea to offer some of those discretionary funds to get her up and going and continue her and hopefully she'll evolve what she's doing into what Jonathan has now moved on, um, doing even bigger things, uh, on the south side of Rock Hill, so.
And not only that, I have been, um, I was, um, accepted, um, as a participant in the Tra Mo Garden Summer, um, Competition, which they sent me a, a free garden bed to garden in and to reap and harvest in. So I'm going up against some other contestants. So, um, I've started my garden with their garden bed and along this journey, they have offered me a partnership, sponsorship to start a community garden in which they're going to also donate eighteen garden beds to my nonprofit organization to start a community garden in which the four-Hers, along with some of the other community volunteers, will help to, um, run with me throughout the year so that we can provide food giveaways to the south side community. So this garden has taken on a life of its own. I never imagined that it would take on this journey, but I'm super excited and those funds would also be used to help with funding, getting dirt, uh, soil, getting equipment, greenhouses for the community garden, um, as well. And so I'm just super excited, um, on the journey that it's going to take me as well as the kids in the south side community and just opening up, opening them up to the, um, opportunities that the Clemson Exchange has to offer to them as well with scholarships, leadership opportunities, youth development, things that they can do as we heard with the students that were up here this evening, just opening them up. And I just love my animals and then things that I do. So I'm just excited for them.
Ms. McKnight, I know, I do want to say thank you for being patient and waiting to share with us all of the good things that you're doing. This is something that I know the council's been very supportive of and we're glad to hear that your project initiatives are doing well. We look forward to seeing more of you.
Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Sure.
Proud of you. And you might want to meet that woman sitting right there.
That's his wife, in case you want to.
You won't believe how much y'all got in common.
She's talking gardening animals and she's already my friend.
Oh, my goodness, you ain't even begun to.
We now move to council member, new non-agenda comments. Do we have any?
Yeah, it is eight fifteen. I'm going to reserve any comment tonight.
I do. Yeah, I want us to look in, I had a issue arise, um, and it's concerning our ordinance on, on, uh, tractor van body trailers and concerning farms. I made mention one time that I'd love to find thirty more of them because they make cheap storage and all. We had a issue that borders Chester and York County and this particular fellow was turned in and I know the farm. Matter of fact, I'm just going to tell you, I work on equipment and all for them. And it's kind of ironic that the individual is also a council member in Chester. And when they're harvesting wheat, they bale the straw and they pull those trailers across field and pull them up. And then a lot of young people go to Home Depot, Lowe's, everywhere else and there's trailers sitting there and you get your straw. They also pack Great Big Old Barn full of straw. This gets them started. But they were cited that they were running a trucking terminal on a farm. It is not a trucking terminal. And we need to look into doing something about this ordinance because us on farms, we do have uniqueness and a lot of things that require in our business separate than what residential or even commercial businesses do. And I would like charge and we have that scent to planning or zoning or somewhere for us to look at, looking into this ordinance and changing.
Any objection to that? You do have an objection?
Oh, no.
Okay. Any objection from council of taking a look at that? Okay. Do you got anything for non, non-agenda? Anyone else?
No, I, I would say, um, someone reached out to me over the weekend, um, they had been working with the city of Rock Hill, um, their program, I think it's called Rolling in Rock Hill, where they come out and paint and do certain things to your property and got all the way to the finish line and she said, the lady called her up right as they were kind of formalizing everything, so I'm sorry to inform you that we won't be able to do this project for you because you live in the county. So I told her I would definitely talk to our staff to find out what are some of the different options that York County can look into, into providing some of our, um, older, more senior homeowners who need a little help sprucing up their property. I know we have volunteers come to the area, um, during the summer months, uh, to do things, but we're, we, when I say we, York County is not attached to any of those efforts. So I would like to find out what are some of the programs out there that we can take advantage of to offer to some of our county residents, similar to what the city of Rock Hill is doing. And I'm sure some of the other municipalities are, are taking advantage. I know Chester does a lot of stuff, um, with their older houses and for their seeds, but I do want to, um, put on staff's radar to look into some of the things that we can pick up, whether it's through some kind of matching grant or just funds out there. I know we don't get CDBG money like the city of Rock Hill, thus to be able to go out and do these programs, but there has to be something that we can tap into, um, similar funds to do similar activities because we do have some of, uh, let's say some of our aging residents, some people who can't afford to go out and do certain things to their homes, uh, even if it's just coordinating with volunteer groups that would like to come here, um, and do, provide labor. If we could, you know, even if it's just from a coordination standpoint, um, like to try to find out what's out there for us to tap into. It may not be anything out there, but at least we can go back and, and say, hey, we looked into it, there's nothing out there, uh, at this time, but we'll keep, keep it on our radar. But I would like to see if we can find something that we can use to assist some of our county residents in the same manner, um, that some of the city, city programs are doing, uh, throughout Rock Hill.
Last week, I think we had probably the most in-depth, um, follow-up to a strategic planning meeting we possibly could have had. And during that meeting, county manager said, and I didn't call him the new county manager, because in that meeting, he said that he will have, we will have accomplished something when we stop calling recode, recode and we start calling it code. So you're now not the new county manager, you are just our county manager. But I just want to say thank you, um, and, and to council and the, the people who are newly involved, I think in the strategic plan, which I think is a great, and that is the county staff. And so thank you for including them and getting their buy-in and their opinions because we've, we've always said, you know, um, our most valuable asset is, is our people. And so when, when those people feel, I have employees and I know how they feel sometimes too. And I just think when they have buy-in and input, you know, they live this job every day and we live this job, well, I live it every day too. But some of us live it, you know, every once in a while or, you know, more than others sometimes, but, or less than others. But, um, I just, I just want to thank you for what you have, have brought to, uh, the county so far.
Any other comments?
I think what she's saying, we ain't going to be easy on you anymore.
Your old hat. Let's get moving.
The new is more out.
Do we have a motion for executive session? Somebody needs.
I'll get in shock.
All right.
I've been listening for seven and a half years. I should be able to do this, but it's always a little intimidating. We're going to, I'll make a motion to go into executive session for receipt of legal advice, legal litigation issue, a contractual matter, receipt of legal advice, procurement protest slash appeal, contractual matter of legal advice, uh, county EMS, contractual matter, receipt of legal advice, city of Rock Hill Palmetto sites MOU, and a contractual matter, receipt of legal advice, city of Rock Hill TIF and TIF projects.
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we will move into executive session. We are out of executive session. No action was taken. Do we have any motions?
We do. Motion to uphold the decision of procurement regarding the award to Wiley Eastern Construction Company Incorporated for Kataba Ben Preserve Phase One for the reasons presented to council in the, something, in the response to protest dated eight-sixteen twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? I'll say this, um, I, I do think that as part of our strategic plan, our council has been very vocal about taking a look at how we encourage our local builders and we're very thankful for local, local bidders to bid on our projects here, how to increase that number, how to make sure that we encourage those bids and also for council to take a very close look at, um, local preference and how we can, um, incorporate that in a way that benefits our taxpayers. I think that is, that is something that all of our council's interested in taking a look at.
Well, I'll certainly have to echo those words because it's been a long time coming to hear others on this council, you know, support that kind of effort. So look forward to working on that.
So I support the initiative as well.
I do.
All right. All those in favor, the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
So the next motion is a move to deny the request of the city of Rock Hill made honor about June twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-four to amend the projects for the downtown TIF.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. You have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.